Emily, how is your husband?
He's going to need to talk.
I don't believe I've corresponded with you before, but I at least talked to him on the phone. This is far past.
Yeah, yeah, we've...I don't remember meeting you actually.
No, I don't think we met. But you have a will.
Yeah.
I understand why you're here.
No, I'm here because I'm part of county watch, so I come once a month, except there's five counties this month, so I'm coming on the second one too.
Oh, so you're not here on your own issues?
No, no, no. Although I am certainly interested in this kind of thing.
Right, cool.
Yeah.
Okay, it's 1:30. We have a public hearing amendment to open on 20/7/40, 131-08-1111. Study area is...open up staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for your record and parry history, Director of Planning and Community Development for Okanagan County. As you've indicated, you are in public hearing to consider ordinance 2019-5. Now, that was adopted on April 1st, 2019. It was adopted without a public hearing, as interim control. As a result of that action, you are required to conduct a public hearing within sixty days. In accordance with RCW 367795, hence our scheduled public hearing today. So the subject material, if you will, of the hearing is the action that you took on April 1st. At the end of the day, you'll leave that action in place, modify it in some way, or repeal it. In the event you leave it in place or modify it, it will route through the Planning Commission, Environmental Review. They will make recommendations that will subsequently come back to you for actual, if you will, permanent enactment and open on county code. A bit of history. The ordinance impacts the restricted areas in Water Resource Inventory Area Number 48, the MEHAW. WAC 173-548 was adopted in 1976, which did a number of things, including establishing stream flow, but it also set aside water in the amount of two cubic feet per second reserves in each of seven reaches. Now, in addition to that action, it closed certain of the surface tributaries to further appropriation of water. So the action established in-stream flow, excuse me, established the reserve, established in-stream flow, and then made note of other water that was available for future appropriation. In 1991, the closure of these surface water tributaries was extended to include groundwater and hydraulic continuity. So what you see here is a combination of the maps of the restricted areas. Let me define that term for you. It wasn't the basin that was closed. It was the surface water and the tributary that was closed for the appropriation. So the yellow and the red areas on these maps are the work of the Department of Ecology that identifies areas where the groundwater is likely to be in hydraulic continuity with the closed surface tributary. Therefore, it too is not available for future appropriation. They created maps in 1991. Beginning last year, they began to review those maps. Their intent is to actually review all of the maps created in 1991. So the red are those areas that have been subsequently reviewed, and as the latest information, the yellow areas are the work from 1991. Now, all of this, again, going back into history, has taken a number of different shapes. The foundation of what we're talking about today, and actually let's go to the restrictions in the code itself. The action you've taken through this ordinance...no, I'm sorry, the local code, 17840. Down to 120. So by adopting the water availability study area, you have put additional restrictions on certain land use activities. So specifically going down to Section D. By this action, I am prohibited from accepting the applications for the subdivision of property. Now, we've noted several exceptions to that prohibition. These come out of 5817040, and we'll get to that in a moment. 5817 being the subdivision code in the revised code of Washington. What we've done was identify certain of those restrictions that are applicable to the action you've taken in that they do not require provision for potable water. Now, we've also added some exceptions in addition to those found in 040. Public purpose segregation as an example, testamentary provisions comes out of our FOIL. Three is our local condition exception, rather. The water right, if the Department of Ecology has issued a water right, you do not pay permit exempt while in this action, only deals with the use of permit exempt while. Then division may of a potable water supply will be provided by improved water purveyor or municipal system. Later in the public hearing, we will discuss in broad strokes some of the comments that have been generated, and they haven't necessarily been submitted for due record, but have been phone calls and questions. In terms of what other sorts of, and I'll use the term mitigations, might be appropriate to allow certain land division applications to move forward outside of the restrictions in this particular ordinance. So now, going back to the foundation, now go ahead, go to 5817. All this stems from your legal obligation to determine for subdivision applications that certain things have been reviewed. Appropriate provisions are the phrases are made for. It goes down through the list. Obviously, the one in play at this particular point in time would be potable water supplies. Now, 5817110 was amplified in the Watcom Hurst decision handed down in late 2017. Now, this had been on the books predating that, and there's actually a series of cases related to the Watcom Hurst decision. But the Watcom Hurst decision did put a very fine point on the county's obligations to determine that, in addition to the other listed things, adequate provisions for potable water supply are made before the subdivision of any land can be approved. Now, 173-548 was adopted in 1976, and for the most part, that was considered to be under the purview of the Department of Ecology to enforce. With the Watcom Hurst decision, the counties were thrust into a more leadership role, I guess for lack of a better way to say it, in terms of some of these evaluations. Now, in response to the Watcom Hurst decision, ESSB 6091 was adopted, and that brought us to...and this was not codified, this has been codified in RCW 9094. This section was not, excuse me, codified. However, it does impact the decisions that we make in that the legislature has now directed us in that 173-548, which is the Water Resource Inventory Area Number 48, the MEHAW specifically listed, that this rule explicitly regulates permit exempt wells, contrasting, for instance, in 49, the Okanagan, where they tell us it does not. So because the rule now explicitly regulates permit exempt wells, the connectivity between the closed surface tributaries and groundwater falls at least in part under our purview. Now, what has occurred that has brought this action to a head is that late last year, the Department of Ecology has determined that they are no longer able to make the determination of hydraulic continuity, or more importantly, lack thereof, in those restricted areas of the closed tributary. So as a result, the past practice of allowing wells drilled to bedrock and sealed with the understanding that that was no longer in hydraulic continuity is no longer, at least in keeping with DOE's new interpretation, a legal water supply. You are required under 5817110 to determine that adequate provisions for potable water are made. The Watcom Hurst decision has expanded that to include not only physical but legal water, so we are now in a position where those restricted areas, the Department of Ecology is unable to make the pronouncement that there's lawful water available, therefore neither are we. So your action placing this restriction on those restricted areas essentially eliminates, or rather prohibits, by accepting the land division application. Now, the focus of this is it establishes the water availability study area, so let's go back to the code section. So this action amends 17840130, now subsection two. Subsection one, in an earlier action, to identify the upper tunk, lower tunk of Tamarack Springs in RIAF 49 as water availability study area. With this action now taken, 17840130 lists the restricted areas and closed tributaries and Water Resource Inventory Area Number 48. The purpose of the study, go ahead, take me down a little bit, no, I'm sorry, right there. We have a two-year period of time in which to conduct a water availability study. There are conditions that you have put on that. We cannot go beyond the two-year timeline unless substantial progress is to be made in accomplishing the adopted scope of work and extension of the necessary accomplished work that has been identified as necessary to complete the study and the necessary resources to complete the work have been budgeted, or source of the necessary resources have been identified and application made to utilize the resources. Let's go back to the actual ordinance. So in your ordinance, scrolling down to the bottom. Purpose of the water availability study area designation is to determine the types of mitigation measures necessary to meet the objectives of protecting closed surface water for further appropriation and impairment. To consult with the Department of Ecology to determine if WAC 173-548050 allows the appropriation of groundwater consistent with the restrictions of 9044050, if the water consumptively used is replaced, and consult with the Department of Ecology to determine if water appropriated from outside of the restricted areas may be used within the restricted areas. So we have a core scope of work for the study established in the ordinance and are prepared to move ahead with that work. But there has been some points made in terms of confusion in the ordinance. Now, let's go back, actually, let's go and take me to 5817040. We've looked at 5817110. That's your obligations to make certain findings before a land division application can be approved. There are exceptions to that. Those are listed in 5817040. Some of these you will recognize because we borrowed from them as we created the exceptions in your ordinance, or in your code. This gave rise to the question if an application that meets the criteria identified in Section 2 of 5817040 is in fact a land division application. Now, you'll note that divisions of land in lots and tracts, each of which, and it goes on to explain, is exempt from the provisions of 5817. It doesn't necessarily say it's not land division. In fact, it arguably uses the term division. However, when you go into our code, it specifically uses the term subdivision. Now, that is something that we can talk about in terms of whether we have some interest in making the language of the code more specific and arguably less confusing. I think it accomplished what we wanted to accomplish, which was to prevent the subdivision of any land except under specific enumerated circumstances. But it's one of the things that came up in discussion, and it's one of the things that certainly we could talk about. Later on in your agenda this afternoon, we'll actually talk about your exempt segregation process, large lot subdivision process, to see how all of this necessarily applied. Because there is, to use the legal phrase, some tension in the codes. Obviously, we have 5817110, which orders you to do specific things, which is being reinforced by our litany of court cases culminating in the Watcom Hurst decision. But you also have on the books the exception in 5817040, begging the question if in accordance to the court cases, the now interpreted law, you cannot impair an in-stream flow or senior water right literally in any way, molecule for molecule, as the phrase, to the exceptions in 040, even upon something that we probably will take up in greater detail in another venue. We also have an issue with 19711800. These are your CEPA exemptions, keeping in mind that your State Barbed Loan Policy Act, RCW 4321C, essentially says all actions, all projects, all decisions will undergo environmental review. Then it directs the department, in this case, the Department of Ecology, to identify certain actions which due to their de minimis nature, or whatever sort of outcome they would, in effect, cause, would not be subject to environmental review. The only land division activity identified in 19711800, which are categorical exemptions, specifically cite short plats. Doesn't cite large lots or dump segregation, it specifically cites short plats. Again, creating some tension in the code in that our large lot subdivision, though it arguably meets the criteria in 5817040, isn't necessarily categorically exempt from the State Barbed Policy Act, giving rise to additional conflict. If by 040, you don't have to make adequate provisions for that whole list of things, what in fact are you reviewing environmentally for impact, which specifically lists roads, water, and all those things in your environmental check. So all discussions that, on another note, the county risk pool has taken under advisement. So we should be getting some feedback from them in terms of whatever potential liability these counties might have as they work their way through these different conflicts and they adopt in law of the state of Washington. So, I think Commissioners, really in a nutshell, that's where you are today. At the end of your public hearing, I will ask you to continue, to give us some additional time to work with the risk pool and with your local, with the prosecuting attorney's office, to see if there is some opportunity to create some more clear language in terms of our code and what we're trying to accomplish. So certainly, after you've taken public testimony and begin your deliberations, I wanted to front-load that question for you, to see if perhaps a continuous would be in order so we can continue to work on some additional language, something the neighborhood of three weeks will give us enough time, and it's still within your 60-day window, pre-rerequirements of 367795. With that, as my opening remarks, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Could you go, are you hooked up to the internet right now? Do you have 5817020 on it? No. I was curious if you go back to, must have been...
04.
What was it? This last, oh, yeah, so, no. Yeah. No. It wasn't 110. What was the last slide that we were just looking at?
Category.
Oh, that, yes, categorical. So this is interesting, so I was reading. Approval of short plats or short subdivisions pursuant to the procedures required, 5817060, and short plats or short subdivisions within the original short subdivision boundaries, right, a cumulative division doesn't exceed the total lots allowed created under 5817020. So what is the total, unless you know that?
For us, it's four lots or less. In GMA counties, they can increase it. Now, just since you raised the question, Commissioner, what we have done, we don't have this for a slide for you. 19711305 speaks to the requirements when you have a project that involves parts of which are categorically exempt and parts of which that are not. It also talks about a project, although all its pieces may be categorically exempt, the combined total may not be. So for instance, we have, for a number of years now, taken when the same owner or related owners with adjacent land, there's a physical and functional relationship, is the phrase in the law, have come in with applications, while they're still individual applications, we have bunched them together and conducted environmental review. Now, in some cases, we would actually use a development agreement to overlay all of those project applications and use that as a means to codify whatever decision were made in terms of road requirements and water requirements and those sorts of things. Sometimes we haven't done that, but we have bunched them together, and in fact, any time that goes beyond the four-lot limit for short plats, we've bunched them together to conduct environmental review.
So I have a question, because this...so if I had a two, a two-lot short lot, and then two separate people wanted, or two separate people bought it, sorry, and said that one of the owners wanted to divide that property into four lots, you would have five original lots then. So would you have to go through CEPA on all five of those lots?
Well, you would have to wait five years before you could further subdivide one of those parcels. So you have, by definition, some separation in mind. Now, it's been a mixed bag in terms of those decisions. So if you had a four-lot short flat, for instance, and after the five years has elapsed, one of those subsequent lot owners further divided into four lots, that may not trigger environmental review, because you have the time separation. And my, depending upon the specific circumstances of the application, if one person bought all four of those parcels, and it appeared we were going to have an ongoing theme, if you will, of further subdivision, we would probably run that under environmental review. Yeah, obviously, all of those administrative decisions, all of those subject to appeal to the hearing. Other questions, Commissioner?
Does anybody come in that did not get a chance to sign up on this?
Sorry.
How many comments did we have? Email? How many comments did we have by email?
I don't know, did you see anybody email?
I'm just asking. You had.
I don't think so. Did I receive a, or may I have had a few? I don't know.
I got requests for the public reference, regarding this code.
No comments.
Any comments that I can see that go into the board?
Okay, so we will move to the public comment portion of our public hearing, and there are only two who wish to speak, H.C. Burkholder and Deanna Meltzer. Because of that, as long as you don't go terribly off in the brush, we won't have a time limit. You'll be able to, if you have a prepared notes or what, we will allow you to finish them, so you won't be under a time constraint today. That's just protocol that we've done in the past. If we get a whole room full of people and ten or twelve people on it, then we go to the time. So H.C. Burkholder, you will be the first speaker, and Deanna, you'll be on there.
I want to tell you, it's really great that there's no limit on what I can say here. Could you state your name for the record? My name is Harry Burkholder. I'm here with an agenda that's broader than this. I see your study area as a part of a bigger issue, and I'm here to advocate, well, to simply state that there is an extreme need for Mehta Valley water issues to be resolved by scientific facts and engineering analyses. And so, when you plan to have a study area, I'm all... And so, when you plan to have a study area, I'm all for it. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna read something that's prepared here that I have sent to the Metow Watershed Council. And what I'm encouraging you to do is not only what you're planning to do, but to do something beyond what you're planning to do. And I'm gonna read the letter that I sent to the Metow Watershed Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I live in the Pine Forest subdivision, not far from Thompson Creek, and I own one hundred and eighty acres of land nearby. About fifty percent of that land is in the Thompson Creek Basin, and the other fifty percent is in the adjacent Elbow Cooley Terminal Basin. Surface water flows in, but not out, of that latter basin. And that's significant because if it turns out that groundwater doesn't flow out of that basin, then that land is not subject to regulation under one seventy-three five forty-eight. That's just an aside. Regarding all of my land, this is all one hundred and eighty acres, the June twenty-five, two thousand and eighteen update to Ecology's nineteen ninety-one Thompson Creek Metow River Closed Tributary Report, so-called Walker Report, states, regarding my land, groundwater within the bedrock units was generally not considered, not considered to be a hydraulic continuity with the stream Thompson Creek. There is currently no effort to re-investigate those conclusions. Now, WAC one seventy-three five forty-eight zero five zero, Part Four, reads, if groundwater being sought for withdrawal has been determined by the department not to be hydraulically connected with surface waters listed as closed, the department may approve a withdrawal. When insufficient evidence is available to the department to make a determination that ground and surface waters are not hydraulically connected, the department shall not approve the withdrawal of groundwater unless the person proposing to withdraw the groundwater provides additional information sufficient for the department to determine that continuity does not exist and that water is available. Clearly, the June twenty-five, two thousand and eighteen Walker Record empowers the Department of Ecology to authorize the drilling of bedrock wells on all of my one hundred and eighty acres, including the fifty percent located within the Thompson Creek Basin. Now, as part of the effort to provide drinking water to single domestic residences located on the fifty percent of my land located within the Thompson Creek Basin, I have proposed to conduct a tracer-based hydrology testing program to determine with certainty whether or not the bedrock aquifers under that land are in hydraulic continuity with the overlying near-surface aquifer in Thompson Creek. If, as expected, the results show that the, show the absence of hydraulic continuity, the wisdom of Ecology's management of Thompson Creek Basin water from nineteen ninety-one to the present will be confirmed. And if the results show that hydraulic continuity does exist, Ecology will have a science and engineering basis for changing its regulations. To my amazement, Ecology has not enthusiastically embraced its proposed hydrologic testing program, apparently preferring instead to attempt regulation based on legal and policy On April seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, I filed a public disclosure request with Ecology that asked for all correspondence, documents, and reports that formed the bases for those considerations. I asked for references to all court decisions in recent case law, all pending lawsuits, and all policy documents. No responsive information was provided. And it leads me to conclude, Ecology intends to manage Metow Valley water arbitrarily, despite the right that Metow Valley landowners have under WAC one seventy-three five forty-eight oh five oh, Part Four, to, and I quote, "provide additional information sufficient for the department to determine that hydraulic continuity does not exist and that water is available." As a result of Ecology's proposed new regulatory approach, I understand that roughly one thousand one hundred Metow Valley landowners have suddenly discovered that they cannot obtain drinking water for single domestic residences using bedrock wells without being afforded the opportunity to exercise their right to provide information demonstrating that the bedrock aquifers on their land are not in hydraulic continuity with closed surface waters. I believe the council, and this is the, this is the Metow Watershed Council, should contact each and every one of those affected landowners and organize a response to the Department of Ecology that encourages the regulation of Metow Valley water based on scientific facts and engineering analyses, not arbitrary legal and policy considerations. And so, I, my closing comment would be to the three of you, I believe the county should do the same thing. And, and do everything it can to insist that the decisions that are made have a scientific basis and engineering analysis, and they're, do not continue to be arbitrary from a legal and policy perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can the clerk of the board scan that copy?
She can have it.
Okay, good to know, thank you very much. Deanna?
Hi, Deanna Milton. So, longtime listener, first-time caller, you know what I'm saying, like I kind of follow stuff, but I have never come to come, so I apologize if I don't follow the rules. Correct me maybe. I have a couple of concerns, and I mean, I agree with what Harry's saying, there should be science behind it. Unfortunately, it seems like the science can change, so I know that that's not always the best way to go. My concerns come specifically from short plot applications and the potential for someone to circumvent that process by doing a boundary line adjustment. So, for example, if I own a piece of property in a closed basin, and I'm able to obtain a piece of property in the main tributary that's touching the Metow River, and I, and they, it touches my parcel, could I drill a well down below, do a boundary line adjustment, and now serve my subdivision that I'm planning? Just because it wasn't specifically mentioned, you know, subdivisions were talked about, but boundary line adjustments are not. So, it just seems like that's something that, that could be done. Again, as long as the water is there to provide for it, I don't see any harm, it's just something that I believe is happening on my neighboring property. And the rest of it, I guess, are questions, and I don't know if I'm gonna get an answer or not, but I think it goes. So, existing short plot applications, if someone submitted a short plot a year ago, does that get put on hold while this gets worked out, or does it keep following its normal timeframe? Does it get grandfathered in? Does it get approval based on previous, like whatever was in place at the time it was submitted and received preliminary approval? And the other thing is, on a short plot application, if there is a discrepancy on the application, like I have an example here of one that was submitted, and this person is claiming they're going to short plot, turning their one parcel into four lots, but then their proposed source of water, they know twenty wells, and I just have some concern about, you know, is there, is there anybody that's fact-checking looking at that discrepancy on the narrative versus, there's no other term for it, another part of the application? Who's checking that? And if on this short plot application, somebody puts a water right claim, this is the claim number that's gonna serve my short plot, and they check the box, yes, I own the water right claim, who's verifying that? Because this specific application, that is not the case, but they did check the box as such. So, the reason I'm asking, obviously, is personally affecting me. I own the water right claim that is on this application, and I did not submit this application. So, who checks that? And, and does the person who actually owns the water right that's now on a short plot application, are they notified? Is there some process to make sure that we're included? I've been to the water conservancy, conservation, community board meeting, and I have comments on record with them, and I believe, I hope anyways, I've never given email response to that from either organization. I attended the water meeting, I didn't ever come to a meeting about this, but I did respond to emails, so, that's it, that's my seal. Thanks for your time.
Thank you all, thank you. Unfortunately, public hearings, yeah, it's a chance for you to testify to the public and tell us what you want. The questions that you would like to have answers to properly could be directed to our director.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that did not sign up that would care to testify on the subject? Commissioners, again, for your record, Curry Houston, Director of Planning, a couple of slides I didn't show you while you haven't posed the question, they've come up at least in part, and that is of the parcels impacted by this decision. Why don't you go to that somewhere for me? Now, these would be the number of lots currently located in those restricted areas, developed versus undeveloped, and the, when it says the new lots by zoning, that would be essentially a mathematical calculation. If you have a, to keep the math simple, a ten-acre parcel in a one-acre zone, you could theoretically create ten parcels.
Can you add up column B real quick, please?
Could I add up column B real quick?
The lady driving the bus.
She may be able to add up column B.
There's actually fourteen hundred and fifty-four total parcels contained within the, within the restricted areas.
So those then?
Oh wait, but those, the undeveloped, so developed parcels?
All parcels, fourteen hundred and fifty-four. Developed parcels, six hundred and thirty-one.
But developed doesn't necessarily mean there's a house or a well.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
You showed improvements on the parcels.
So we're somewhere between eight hundred and twenty-three and fourteen hundred and fifty-four in number of parcels that probably don't have a.
Don't have a single family, right? Then mathematically, your fourteen hundred and fifty-four parcels could to become eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-one parcels based upon underlying zone. So, again, just facts to assist you in your deliberation. There was a question relevant to the, to the public hearing in particular, and that's in terms of applications that have already been submitted. You are vested, of course, in the rules in place at the time of complete application, but keeping in mind the requirements amongst which are to determine an adequate provision of portable water, that's information relevant relative to the point the decision is made. So, as the information comes in, the decision, while the application is vested, and this action does not impact that, you still have to conduct the regular, if you will, the regular review process in light of the information available.
Should we close public comment at this time?
If no one else wishes to speak, as my understanding.
Your recommendation is to continue this.
I think it would be appropriate, commissioners, in that I want to explore and actually go back to seventeen eight four hundred. Whether compelling criticism or no, I suppose, in the eye of the beholder. Go to one twenty, please. Where am I? Okay, go to, oh, my, D, it'd be D. No application for the subdivision of property is the phrase that seemed to generate some confusion. And this goes back to the contrast between fifty-eight seventeen one one zero and fifty-eight seventeen oh four oh. Now, we use the term subdivision in its broadest sense, and you'll note when we created the exceptions to that, while we borrowed language from oh four oh, it's not completely out of oh four oh. And in fact, oh four oh doesn't necessarily say these applications are not subdivision applications, it simply says certain applications don't have to follow the requirements of the due executive. Okay. Under the, under the banner of the idea that you shouldn't have to hire a lawyer to read local code, we are actually exploring if maybe we can put some better language. We believe this language accomplishes what our interpretation was of your intent. You didn't want to create any more lots in those restricted areas until we had a handle on portable water supply.
The division of property.
I'm sorry?
The division of property.
Creation of more lots, if you will, yes. So, anyway, that would give us an opportunity to bat around some maybe language to suggest by whatever, and then, so again, three weeks would be adequate for us to conduct that review, continue to work with the risk pool. We also have, and again, that's within our sixty-day window. You have a six-month window to move from interim control to, through the public hearing process, the planning commission, environmental review, and subsequently back to you. I don't believe we'll have any problem meeting that deadline, but if we do, we can always extend for an additional six months if there's compelling reason to do so.
Three weeks, it'd be May twentieth?
And could you restate three, what you're going to go through in that period of time?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Would you restate what you were going to go through during that period of time as far as reviews, because we're concerned.
In the three weeks between now and the continuance? I'm looking at two things, actually, in our discussion. One, we, I gotta get it better working, just anyway. No application for the subdivision of property located within an overlay zone. Now, go back up to one twenty. Let's see, where am I? Nope, go down. Oh, here we go, I'm sorry. No application for the subdivision of property located. Now, this language was specifically crafted to avoid the vesting question. However, that's, that is a little unusual in that the language here could arguably say no approval for the subdivision or for the division of lots or something. That's the kind of language that we wanted to bat around to see if we're better served rather than to have to rassle the question of vesting, meaning certainly apply, but if it's clear they can't be approved, that may be just as well. That's part of the legal review that we're going under, just to see which language is more consistent. more consistent with the jargon of land use, if you will, and arguably more easily defended. And then really the question, what do we mean by subdivision? Was our interpretation, the Commissioners meant the division of any land except for these specific exceptions? We can explore that. This gets the job done.
So, a definition...
It is defensible, but there may be a better way to say it.
So, a definition would be considered, just putting in the ordinance?
Right.
Because in the subsections and the subdivisions, there is one reference to 5817, and it doesn't reference 5817 as a piece of this ordinance as it sits today. So, I mean, that's kind of the way I've looked at it for quite some time now. But yes, we need to get down to what actually a subdivision is, because having borrowed the language, I don't think holds us to the statute itself. This is in addition to the subdivision rules, and it just restricts what we do under 5817, but what we do in subdivisions in general. So, I think it's applicable, but I think it's good to go ahead and go through that period to look at how we might improve the ordinance.
Which may be the fix we arrived at, just simply adopting a definition section?
Yeah.
Other questions, staff, Commissioner?
I guess the only other comment is really, I mean, it's one of the things we're trying to do is make sure that, for the reason for creating the ordinance was to make sure that we weren't putting more lots out there that people had expectations to have a bundle of sticks that goes with it, and it's not there. So, in other words, quit, stop for the moment to make sure that we don't create a difficult situation for anybody and ourselves, trying to make a decision on whether or not it can be served by water.
Okay. So, I'll close staff open. I think the 20th is on Monday at 1:30. So, all in light of the recommendation, first of all, yes, are we going to keep public record, or, sorry, public testimony open to written comments?
We have in the past, and we certainly do that today.
I think, I think we should.
Okay.
Not ver, no verbal testimony on the next.
Yeah, so we're going to close verbal, then we'll leave written comments open to the continued date.
So, I would move to continue this public hearing to May 20th at 1:30 PM, is that what we're going to do? At 1:30 PM?
Let's see, move to...
No, it's second discussion.
Here you go.
All okay?
Okay.
Close same side?
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, and that ends it for today, so you can get to closing.
Next item on your planning agenda, Commissioners, is a broader discussion now of your mitigation strategies. What prompted me to put this on as we have received some feedback from the Department of Ecology in terms of what that might be? Talking about in that particular case of what I'll call an infiltration gallery, bringing water from out, in this case, dealing specifically with these restricted areas, water from outside the restricted areas to within the restricted areas for subsequent use. It's not an approach that is a nonstarter in 49. The issue's a bit different in that there'd be a little more challenge identifying the legal water supply in 49 from which came the water to pipe in or truck in or what ever.
Right, we have a totally different thing going on.
Different session?
Over there, everybody's allowed to take part in the TCFS reservation, it's just in some of those spots, the surface water is closed, so you can't get to the TCFS reservation.
Right, exactly. So, mostly I just wanted to bring to the Commissioners' attention that those discussions with the Department of Ecology are ongoing. You heard the presentation by Aspect Consulting in terms of some approaches to mitigation strategies that are in place. The question of water right did come up during the public hearing, and of course, I guess eye of the beholder, whether that's mitigation or no, essentially what you're doing with the water right is either using that water right as specific water supply for the project, or arguably you could retire a water right somewhere within a defined area that accomplishes the end goal and utilize that water through permitting at wells or some other water source. So, kind of the same thing, but not exactly. Those decisions, of course, in terms of water rights, lie with the Water Conservancy Board and subsequently the Department of Ecology. So, unless you already have a perfected water right which allows for domestic use, ordinarily it involves some kind of a conversion, either from seasonal to year round, from irrigation or stock watering or both, to domestic use proving up in terms of how much of that water right you may or may not have relinquished. And some people, from time to time we run into this, they confuse a water claim with a water right. A water claim is a different instrument, which may well eventually work its way into being a water right, but they're not the same thing coming out of the chute. And those are decisions, while we recognize them, we ordinarily condition any approvals based upon the display of water right, if someone subsequently proving up on that. Never exact an example of that a year, perhaps not quite ago, where someone, a landowner, proposed the use of water right as a portable water supply. The condition on preliminary approval was that they would have to convert that to the use by the flat. And to my knowledge, that hasn't moved forward very far yet.
And the colleges on board with mitigation?
They are, conceptually, they're on board with mitigation, just what that final shape is going to be is what we're working on. As I point out, it's going to be different, it's going to be different from 48 to 49. And keeping in mind, we have other water resource inventory areas in the county, while they don't have extreme flow rules, they do have senior water right holders. And while we tend to fixate as a water converse on the extreme flow rule, the senior water right holders are something we need to be cognizant of as well.
And so that having an existing water right and using it in another area would still require the Conservancy Board's...
It would, it would require their review and subsequently review the Department of Ecology. So, say I just bring it up, Commissioner, and actually this kind of morphs into the next item on your agenda, that of your exempt segregation and large lot subdivision process. Why don't you go back to 040, 40, 5817040? Your exempt segregation, and actually more specific to your large lot subdivision, which codified in OCC 1610, you actually don't have a process codified for exempt segregation. Essentially, what it is is a definition. If your four lots are less, you're in exempt segregation. If your four lots were more, your large lot subdivision provided each lot has a total size of 20 acres or 1/32 of a section. Now, that's actually in excess, if you will, of the exception found in 040, which actually allows division of land in five acres or greater in size. Now, or can be described as 1/128, I think it is, 1/32. Anyway, a fraction of a section. Now, we talked about during the public hearing some of the tensions in the code, and if you go elsewhere in 5817, it talks about the county's ability to adopt a process for short flats. Now, some argue that that provision was created to allow you to morph from these exceptions into the simpler short process as opposed to the more complex large lot, or excuse me, subdivision process. The question, the discussion, if you will, that I hope to start today is whether because of the Watcomers decision, the continuing evolution of water law and planning requirements, if your large lot subdivision process is particularly relevant anymore. Now, let's carry out our scenario. If in fact, we apply it as it's currently on our books, and if we argue it's consistent with the exceptions in 5817040. Push the SEPA question aside for the moment. If a person then creating, in our case, 20 acre lots, are not required to show that adequate provision, why don't you go to 120? Are not required to demonstrate all of these things, then it gives rise to the question, at what point do you deal with this? Now, the logical answer in terms of portable water supply is at your building permit phase. So, the way your large lot subdivision process is used on the books now, although again, we have the SEPA question, none of this is done then at the point those lots are created. So then, in accordance with 19, you would then subsequently have to demonstrate adequate provisions for portable water at the point of your building permit. Now, I suppose that's just perhaps a question of disclosure upfront, you're buying a lot upon which no provision for adequate supplies of portable water have been demonstrated, you know, know that upfront. But it does give rise to the question if that's even allowed under the whole discussion. As you'll recall, that the courts, Watcomers in particular, had a discussion about building permits, and it had a discussion about land division. It really didn't create any hierarchy in terms of those decisions, and it certainly didn't cite 040 in any of the language it included, which I think is a problem in terms of what the county's real legal obligations are in these land division applications. So, moral to the story, if you will, I'm suggesting that we take a look, and this is actually one of the things Risk Pool is assisting us in reviewing exactly where the county's obligations lie, and I just, from a mercenary perspective, where our liabilities lie in terms of when and how these different decisions are made. Observations, Commissioners?
Well, certainly when you think about just outside of water, you think about roads, we, those issues pop up on occasion.
They do.
When the adequate public ways, streets or roads or alleys are not provided for, and then we have roads that fail because they're not upgraded to address the needs of the folks that bought exempt lots.
And as the county engineer points out to me from time to time, at the point your permitted road system, if any of it bumps above 180 T's, there's some obligation on the part of the county to approve those.
Right, so we call them primitive roads all day long, and they still have that obligation. So, that's a problem that doesn't help us in doing cap of facilities plan in any way shape or form, because, well, you know, J H Green Roads is a good example of it, there's a few other roads like that, that people aren't suspecting that they would have those kinds of problems when they buy a lot in those subdivisions.
Absolutely.
And then the county gets called to task on fixing them during spring activity or whenever, whenever the water regime changes. So, that's a problem that we have to deal with.
We get those calls from time to time and are asked to intervene, if you will, or resolve the issue, maybe is a better way to say it. And actually, we get more calls on roads. The large lots can just put a disclaimer that the county's not responsible for any roads. In that paperwork, sometimes they record easements, sometimes they don't, sometimes they're simply drawings. And then the different landowners, as these lots sell and change hands, disagree on where those roads should be.
Yes. And when you've got a muddy mess in the area, they tend to change their course quickly. Sometimes they end up in your front yard because the travelers on the roads keep having to move over. Maybe that's why they made the streets 100 foot wide in the subdivisions in the city, or in the cities when they first started out because they were mud holes.
So, Commissioners, the reason I bring this up is, one, we're working with the Risk Pool to see that we can get some kind of legal analysis in terms of what issues, if any, exist as a result of these processes remaining on the books. It's up to you in the end, whether they remain in their current form, whether they remain as amended, or whether you choose to eliminate them, that'll be a discussion we'll have somewhere down the road.
So, I suppose the Risk Pool is probably going to have a discussion in the pool itself about it as well.
They are, this is actually, it isn't, and I guess it should be more specific, for those monitoring, this isn't a specific open on county issue. The members of the Risk Pool, and more than pointing to Risk Pool on behalf of its members, have taken interest in this question now, subsequent to Watcomers, subsequent to SSB 1691. Many of their member counties are going through the watershed plan updates, they're looking at their codes in relation to that whole series of decisions. So, in the interest of trying to get in front of the questions people anticipate will be asked as time goes on, they're beginning that review. So, this is a specific, some challenge we're having, is to pitch across the membership to the Risk Pool.
Okay, so subdivision is five or more lots. A short subdivision is four lots or less.
Right.
And in 5817, 040, subsection 6, oh, I'm sorry, not subsection 6. Subsection 2, divisions of land into lots or tracts, each of which is 1/128 of a section or five acres, chapter becomes inapplicable. Okay, provided, for purposes of completed size...
So, you're saying it drags it out of the subdivision rule?
Yeah, so basically a subdivision is, subdivision is five or more lots, short subdivision is four or less lots, but if the lots are five acres or larger, then the chapter doesn't apply.
To carry it through, if you read 5817 on a departmentalized basis, it's the authority you're going to, your large lot subdivision process could allow the creation of lots five acres or larger in size instead of 20 acres or larger in size. Theoretically, you wouldn't have to demonstrate adequate provisions for water, for roads or anything else. Now, our 620, and I think as such it tends to fly a little more under the radar stream, I suspect we try to amend to allow five acre size lots or greater, would probably bring the discussion to a head much more quickly.
Okay, so what section is the SEPA portion of it under?
Now, this is strictly a subdivision.
I understand that. Okay, so at what point does SEPA need to be done?
Let's talk about that. See, and so now, now we have the other identified tension, if you will, in the statutes. Again, 4321C, RCW says everything goes through SEPA, except for the things they enumerate or the things the department, in this case, Department of Ecology, identifies as being exempt due to their nature. So, for instance, your personnel policies, all of those things would go through SEPA except their specific categorical exemption. Your budget is specifically categorically exempt from environmental review, so it gives that level of specificity. And 19711800, sub 6, sub D... And one ninety-seven eleven eight hundred, sub six, sub D, it identifies, then there are a number of land use activities that are exempt. The only division of property activity that's identified is short plats and short subdivisions.
Okay, so Perry, I just want to just talk about something, you guys, when you do PowerPoints. It's very hard, if you're the audience, to know what you're actually looking at here. So, WAC one ninety-seven eleven dash eight hundred is categorical exemptions for SEPA, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so right now, we're looking at subsection D of the categorical exemptions for SEPA.
Sub six, sub D, right.
Okay, sub six, sub D.
So, back to the tension.
So, sub six is land use decisions.
Land use decisions.
Yep.
So, back to the tension, we have one body of RCW that says you can create new lots in a certain way that doesn't have to meet the requirements of fifty-eight seventeen one one oh, which it was embedded, the requirement to provide adequate provisions for potable water. Fifty-eight seventeen says you don't have to worry about that. However, forty-three twenty-one C and the rules adopted in one ninety-seven eleven don't say you don't have to, therefore you do have to review for all those environmental amendments. Keep in mind, your environmental review is structured for the most part around the environmental checklist. All projects of all sizes fill out the same environmental checklist. And that environmental checklist asks very specific questions about very specific areas of environmental concern, one of which is water, one of which is impacts to services and infrastructure, habitat, which is actually a fourteen page document that is your environmental checklist. So, you would then fill out your environmental checklist, which would undergo environmental review on a large lot subdivision application in accordance with our code, by which you are looking for impacts to groundwater, and surface water, and roads, and services, and all of these things that fifty-eight seventeen oh four oh says you don't have to do. So they don't, they don't line up.
I, I'm, I was gonna say, well, I'm a little confused here, because, well, this says, though, that you don't, that there's a categorical exemption to a four lot or less subdivision.
Sure.
But they're written, short plats and short subdivisions together.
Same, same.
Well, not if you, not if you read oh four up. See, if you, if you, if you take that, that, the argument, the comments received in oh four oh, they're not plat applications, they're not short plats, they're not long plats.
Well, but, but in the definitions section of...
That depends on if we embrace it, right? The point being that there's conflict, the tension in these different bodies.
Well, I know, but that's why I'm trying to go through this, to try to figure this out, because the, a plat, and if you go back to the RCW, the definition, the plat is simply the map on the division of the subdivision.
Subdivision, and then there's short subdivision.
Right, so a short subdivision is four lots or less.
Right.
Okay, so, the, sorry, one ninety-seven eleven eight hundred.
Short plat, you're saying?
It just says that short plats or short subdivisions, okay, don't need to go through SEPA.
Correct.
Okay, so, where are we in, where are we in conflict?
If a short plat doesn't, if a short plat is required, and it is, to meet the requirements of fifty-eight seventeen one one zero.
Okay, so good, let's go to fifty-eight seventeen one one zero.
Then you have all of those requirements you have to meet, right? Potable water, etc.
Oh, yeah, see here?
But you don't have to go through environmental review. You do have to meet the requirements of fifty-eight seventeen one one oh. If you're not doing a short plat, and you're not doing a subdivision under the banner of the exceptions found in oh four, which is the foundation of your large lot subdivision, you're not required to make adequate provisions for all of the things listed in one one zero, which is still required to go through environmental review, because it's not a short plat.
Go back to that. Okay, so in fifty-eight seventeen one one oh, says the city, town, or county legislative bodies that require public use and interest posed and served for establishment of the subdivision, which in definitions, five lots or greater.
Some interpret it that way.
So, you interpret it that way.
I don't believe that's the legal interpretation.
So the intent of what we're trying to do, as you referred to earlier, is to make this read, so that they don't have to hire a lawyer to interpret it.
That's my goal. I mean, we get pushed back all the time from the surveyors who want to, to do a large lot subdivision, and we make them go through SEPA. Because we, we have found, in fact, we were challenged, at one point, we never went to litigation, but our analysis by Municipal Research at the time agreed, there is no categorical exemption of SEPA for the large lot subdivision. We haven't, at least so far, run exempt segregations through, under the banner of, okay, if four lots or less sounds like a short plat, short plats are categorical exempt. But that's a local interpretation, and we haven't defended that.
See, now, because in seventy, fifty-eight seventeen oh two oh, the definition of subdivision is five lots or more, and short subdivision is four lots or less. So this is fifty-eight seventeen one one oh, and specifically, so further down past the definitions, specifically it says, by the establishment of the subdivision, which in the laws or terms above, means five lots or greater.
What we don't have on the screen is the requirements for short plats.
Right. You know, you mean our own requirements for short plats, right?
Our own requirements.
So, there's another section that...
That's, that's a missing piece.
That's a missing piece right there.
That's a missing piece. So, well, yeah, as I say, this is kind of an introduction to the discussion for me today. If the Commissioners are interested in continuing the discussion, they have, we'll bring our own subdivision code, we'll report out what we get out of Municipal, or others' code.
And so there's... There's some clarification will come from that opinion.
Well, I hope so. We have lots of legal, we have lots of legal opinions that left my head down, so, you know, we'll cross that bridge if we get to them.
Well, and there's also a conversation that has to take place around whether or not you really want SEPA to apply to short plats, as you describe them in your own short plat ordinance.
But, saying that, you're kind of keyed in on what I think, where this discussion will finally go. We'll look at our own subdivision code, and we haven't reviewed that for years, still working to get past the conflict. But we'll look at our subdivision code and see where it's consistent or no with the case law, and the RCW's updated by judge, and then it's interpreted by the court. We'll look at our short plat code and see if it is still consistent, relevant in terms of a more recent court decision, that sort of thing. Look at our sub, large lot subdivision, but even the title of our large lot subdivision, to your point, is contradictory to our discussion. And we haven't looked at that for ten years or so. And except, say, there's even a process in your code, it's just a definition. So, in the end, looking at all of that, and what we're doing is actually trying to pump what will be the revisions, or at least the review of our subdivision code, following conflict, following zone, critical areas of subdivision code. If we'll need to review all those bodies of regulation to ensure consistency with the conflict.
So, I mean, my thoughts are, if I, if you were to take eighty acres and cut it into four twenty acre blocks, yeah, you know, you're probably not doing a whole lot, but it's the cumulative impacts then of those twenty acre blocks getting cut up into four or five acre blocks apiece. So now you have sixteen, and I understand there's a time period there, but in the original analysis, if it's, if it's thought that you're gonna take eighty acres and cut it into sixteen lots, number one, you're over the, you're over the limit for your class A system. And number two, are you really looking at the cumulative impacts of, of what's going on? And that's where I would, that's where I would start to be worried. So, that's why I asked the question of, okay, so if somebody wants to, to, if you have a four lot subdivision that never went through SEPA, and then five years later, somebody wants to take and cut up one of those five acre pieces into, I mean, those twenty acre pieces into fives, and now you have a total of seven lots, do you then do SEPA on all seven lots?
A question, and then the whole question of forty-nine, in particular, when we get into our watershed plan update, and the discussions of mitigation, water for water, or whatever form that takes, where's, what stage is the simplest place to do that? When you're creating lots, when you have a project in total, or when each individual person comes in for a building permit, and on and on and on. Somewhere in there is the sweet spot, if you will, unless, unless we come up with some comprehensive mitigation program, water bank, where everybody just buys some, like, water out of the bank when they draw a building permit or something, in which case now we have a separate thing, but we haven't got there yet.
That, that does not take care of the localized event of the lack of water.
Nope.
So if you drill, I mean, if I say, well, I'm gonna buy some water from up in Orville, and I'm gonna drill a hundred wells on a hundred acre parcel, I'm creating a localized event, because the water that I bought up there isn't sitting in the ground down here.
Very true, very true. So, back, back, back to my point, you know, when do we work that out? When each person comes in for a building permit, or when you create the lots for the year?
Well, and then there's another phase to the whole subdivision thing, where you're looking at cumulative impacts, and that scenario where you talked about sixteen more lots, and then, and then zoning plays a role there, and, you know, some advanced thinking and comprehensive planning in zoning in that area too, because if you're concerned about that, you might also be looking at the area hand in time, and zoning appropriately, so possibly in a scenario where you could be creating those five acre lots.
Well, see, what I, what I don't understand is, that it's, there is no time limitation in there for, if you're dividing lots that are greater than your short subdivisions. It doesn't say anything about timing in there.
Well, it does in the short plat. Are you talking about the period of time, say, you have to, you have to wait five years?
Yeah, but isn't he talking about the larger exemption?
I'm, I'm talking about fifty-eight seventeen, where it says that in the exception, in the exceptions, uh, what was that, oh four oh? Yeah, so the divi, so, this, the chapter's non-applicable, so, so nothing to do with subdivisions is applicable.
Right.
Um... No, I wasn't looking at number two, I was looking at where, where it said that it's, it's a, it's a short subdivision until you get to the point where your, where anything you've done has made it a long subdivision.
Okay.
So, but, but there is no timeframe in here.
Oh, I see, I see.
So there is no five years, if I had, if I, the scenario I ran through with sixteen lots was something that I could, where theoretically, you could do some, make, create sixteen lots without SEPA, without there being SEPA on it, if there was some time limitation, like you were saying.
Theoretically, if you drug it out long enough, that's possible.
Okay, but...
There's no, there's no bright line, if that's your point, that's absolutely true.
Yeah, but my point in here is that it's a long subdivision, if at any point, it goes over your four lots, no matter what.
Well, you can further, you can further subdivide lots in short plat and wait five years.
Everybody's talking about going, aren't you talking about going greater than four lots?
Greater than four, well, if my, if I had, if I had, if I had a short subdivision on four lots.
Right.
And then I went to subdivide one of those lots again into however many lots, it would be a long subdivision.
Now, if you wait five years...
Where does it say that at?
In your short plat.
In our short plat code, Okinon County's short plat code.
Right, I think that's in the statutes, no, let's make the point.
Well, I'd have to go back to the first one, memory now, because I looked at the local code. Your local code has that five year coverage. We don't, we don't have the statutes online, so, we'll, I'm getting a handle here on, on the sorts of additional information that will inform our future discussions, so, we'll, see, I wasn't looking for a decision today, this is to start of what will be several sections of discussion.
I think, yeah, you'll get it out of there, but I think that the short plat, five year is a state...
I, I know it's in our local code, and may well be in the court's...
Because I think it's in every code that I've ever looked at.
But we, we, we're not hooked up online, or you pull it up. Further questions? We can, like I say, we're not looking for decisions today, it's wanted to signal to the Commissioners, the discussion has begun in certain venues, and obviously, it all comes to you sooner or later, as we work out how you want to, to review your local codes in light of the number of court cases, state law, and our own local code interpretations.
Well, I think it's important for us to include in the comprehensive plan what we're trying to accomplish when we take the statutes, converting ordinances, and stated in the comprehensive plan, so we can always go back and look at that, say, why are we doing this?
But, and my way of using that as a segue, as we get into our, the more detailed discussion of comprehensive plan, now, for the planning commission, which will come back to you in some time. If we've made a very tight tie in comprehensive plan between lot creation, development, and groundwater, as an example, if you have a process on the books that allows the creation of lots without that consideration, it's arguably not consistent with your comprehensive plan. So if you want exceptions to those requirements to exist, there should be some discussion of that in your comprehensive plan. Just off to it.
Yep, I agree.
We'll come back to this, Commissioners, a number of times, I'm sure, I'm sure. There's three bills that I wanted to talk about that have passed, that could have some impact on the way we do things. First one, I give to you.
Oh, three.
Well, there's three that caught my eye immediately, let me say it that way, and it ripples into building as well. Now, I have not completed a detailed review of any of these, but in running our thumb down, it, Ron, you can probably speak more to the first one than I, but there are some things that came immediately to mind. Seventeen ninety-eight, to start out with, is your short term, or as we call them, ninety rentals, senior public health codes, overnight transient accommodation. One of the things in, in my quick review that it brings question, Dan, why don't you come up here and join us for a moment, since I see you back there? I mean, it's your mic, right, in the world? Now, the thing that stood up to me immediately was, we have in Brandon Beach, a commissioner some time ago adopted by a resolution, kind of a hybrid, uh, exception, if you will, to the requirements of the build info. As I read this now, I don't know that you have that opportunity. But that's just one of the things that we probably need to revisit, in terms of what will trigger Dan's requirements in the building code for these overnight transient accommodations. Now, Rocky has done a more detailed review, what sorts of things stood out to you?
Um, so it lays out that the houses now need to have the exit signs labeled, they need to have a floor plan, um, up on the wall. They need to have a list of all emergency contacts, um, i.e. nine-one-one, fire department, ambulance, and that also needs, they now need to have a off of duty, off hours contact person.
Let this just take place.
Huh?
Let this just log in.
That part I don't know.
We get past it as an emergency. We'll get that information from this thing.
So it's not retracted.
I, I didn't read it as saying that, so the decisions that have been made, although existing, uh, a ninety rentals, transient accommodation will fall under, so I don't know if it was, in, in the purest sense of grandfathering, I'm not sure it speaks only to new ones, we'll have to take a look at that. The thing that it does give rise to is, is how much of this we need to walk into our code, people might have adopted now, regulation on ninety rentals and an annual licensing requirement. We'll need to do some additional review, need to get Dan pulled into this, to see what other sorts of requirements we need to build into your local regulation, or if it can be just a supplementary site. We'll have to complete that review to see which of it's absolutely mandatory, and which of it falls, uh, to the landlord. Now, it also puts a little more, um...
Wait, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So, the health department does a lot of, I mean, their requirements for...
Are above ours.
Are, are above yours. And so, I mean, even this...
For the most part, other than the sprinkler system.
Right, sprinkler system, but I mean, like, garbage, the number of garbage, I mean, the number of garbage cans contained within the...
Fire extinguishers.
Fire extinguishers, so, I mean, this doesn't look like it's, you know, I, I was worried, 'cause I looked at the place where it said, provide that their short-term rental is compliant with RCW nineteen twenty-seven dot five thirty, and I was like, oh, no. And all that is, is carbon monoxide alarms.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's, I mean, there's not a lot of stuff in here, it's just like a little hotel, you know, it's provided for.
List who's supposed to enforce that. See, this, this is, Dan has identified what I always worried about. There may be some things that aren't particularly significant in the I- Maho word, to be sure somebody thought they were important, 'cause they dropped the bill on it. But as we're gonna discuss in another bill, follow who's enforcing this thing, and more the question, whose liability is it if you don't?
It says for a first-time violation of this section, the city or county attorney must issue a warning letter to the owner or operator. An owner that violates this section after receiving a warning letter is guilty of class two civil infraction.
And that was, uh, coming on to me to, to enforce these?
I don't know, I don't know if that comes on to you, or if that's the, 'cause it's consumer, it's under consumer safety.
The, the, the bill is not particularly well written, and it isn't real specific in terms of whom is doing what. Which is, which always causes me concern, carbon monoxide detectors, it's now required, we know it's required, if you don't have it and somebody is seriously injured as a result.
Well...
Who gets sued, who is responsible for the enforcement?
Yeah, they didn't lay it off their...
And under joint severable liability, who ends up paying more?
Right.
Whoever's got the deepest pockets.
So, all short-term rental operators must...
It's either chapter...
But it says, you know, just what Andy just read, you know, read, read it. The city or county attorney, let tell me, it's not near civil debt pay, and, and then it, it would be up to the prosecutor, or the...
The nexus, the...
Office to, uh, issue a, a class two civil infraction.
The nexus that we've now created is through your licensing requirement. We've chosen to regulate ninety rentals specifically, we now have an annual licensing requirement, which at least implies that we have accepted some level of responsibility to make sure they're operating properly. Now, as you point out, you have no public health requirements there, maybe much of this can fall to them. Dan, certainly, in enforcing the building code, will have to deal with those things, and I think we need to revisit the exceptions that we made for Brandon Beach in specific. There's all these things that I signaled with the commissioners, that we probably need to take a real close look at, just to make sure that, uh, we're covering our bases, I guess, to use that as a phrase.
Oh, this is interesting. Short-term rental platforms must provide short-term rental operators with a summary of the consumer safety requirements in subsection one of this section.
See, now, this will be an interesting thing that...
So that means if I'm on VRBO, they're required to send me the regulations, telling me what I have to have.
That's correct.
Well, that...
So then, if, if I didn't do that, wouldn't VR, and I didn't get it, something from VRBO, wouldn't they be in?
Well, that's a good question, I mean, and, and actually, now it strikes me that suddenly these, these management firms, if you will, are, are taking human form. Before, and Rocky went through this discussion with you, people are online, it's a nameless, faceless thing that you sign up for, and then eventually, they tell you when people are staying, and they send you money. It's kind of a fascinating arrangement to me, but, but now they're at least on the book, uh, for making sure somebody's following some kind of rules or regulations, so...
So probably with, I would recommend with our licensing, that we, we cut this as a consumer safety, uh, memo. And just write down the requirements under, you know, here's the consumer safety requirements under, uh...
So, you know, I, I would just be glancing it real quick, and by the way, the, the regulations, the chapter that it's under is, is actually sixty-four, it's about properties, conveyance of properties, they're not, it's not under, uh, safety laws or anything like that, so, like, even the condominium act, it's under that, same set of rules. And I don't, I have yet to find anything here that directs local government to do a darn thing, um, and that's an important part of it. So there's gonna be a legal, there'll probably be a few legal reviews of it. Um, and then the reference to the, a department, the only, the local government, or only government, that it actually refers to, so far, that we're at a whole thing.
Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue. And so there's a whole bunch of things that, if you go into a hotel, that are also requirements, um, we're not in there enforcing those rules. The initial rules that I think the building code dealt with was the international building code provision, which caused these problems in Brandon Beach, one of the, anyway, right, is, uh, the requirement that they sprinkle the building.
It was a sprinkler, right.
That, but that was actually, came through as international building code amendment to the state building code, and then that came, comes to us, 'cause we adopt these codes. But, like I say, so far, and it, ob- obviously, I'm not gonna get excited about it yet until, uh, there's further analysis, 'cause I don't see anything in here that preempts our zoning, or directs local governments to do anything. So, I think that one thing that we would consider, of course, is that if we have, you know, rules that we reference this piece, but I don't know that, you know, we're gonna be able to act before it. Again, when we, we were watching these bills go through, and if something preempts local zoning, we are on it. And this doesn't do that, but, again, might have implications that...
I, I understand, I don't know that I'm excited about, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any, any...
'Cause I don't want anybody to get excited.
I'd say, and then I, I reserve the right to be not excited about it, in fact, I can convince myself that's the case. But I do think we have some local decisions that we've made, and we might want to revisit.
This is a real property and conveyances, is the name of the chapter.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Chris, that I don't think that we need to get overly excited.
Well, I would prefer to get excited before I have to.
We'll be expecting something.
Generally, when someone makes you excited about something, it's too late.
Right.
But no, I agree, we'll, we'll conduct, we'll conduct a more detailed analysis, and we'll make sure, but the one that popped immediately to my mind...
You know, in your seminars, there, I mean, not seminars, but, uh, webinars that you're having with, uh, with WAC, did this bill ever come up on the, their radar?
Now, that, we tracked this one a little bit, uh, but not much, really, through the, the planning director's weekly updates.
You know, there's a number of items in here, and looking at them, and what, and observing the problems that they're having with, um, overnight rentals in neighborhoods, um, some of these address those right front on.
Yeah, look at the liability insurance, you gotta have a million dollar worth of coverage.
Well, another one is the fact that there's a lot of those, um, overnight rentals, that something's going on there, and they don't have any contact for anybody around to say, hey, you know, you've got some people in here, and they're shooting, uh, playset, which happens occasionally.
See, here, here's where I open the top of my phone with a greater level of excitement, perhaps, of doing it. You read those sorts of things, you have to have your liability insurance, you have to have carbon monoxide detector. Doesn't say necessarily who's going to enforce them.
A question I have about that...
Nature abhors the fact.
Is this, is that, and I, and I, it's something I don't have the answer to, but, but it's, uh, when, when you're required by, uh, the Landowner Tenant Act to put in, um, uh, smoke alarms and these things.
Carbon monoxide, right.
And, and so there's, there's all these requirements, and I don't know if they're above and beyond just a straight building code or not, but they're the responsibility of the, um...
Landlord.
Landlord. And, and, and then there's responsibility that gets conveyed to the renter as well, after you initially provide those things. I mean, you're not going in there and doing that, um, enforcement on those kind of things.
No, any new buildings already follow those regulations, it's the older buildings that were built before, or smoke alarms and carbon monoxide were required.
Right, so when you...
Obviously, have to provide them now.
Yeah, even if it's an older building, you're, you're still having to do it.
But we don't do that inspection or verification, you'd be pretty busy. Mm-hmm. We don't license long-term rentals.
Right.
Is the distinction...
Well, that's another one thing, you know, but, but these rules, what I'm, what I'm paralleling is, these rules come out as a requirement, and the, lots of times, the actual liability just lands flat on the business owner, and if something goes wrong, and they didn't do it, there's that issue, I suppose that health looks at those things when they come to inspect, I don't know, that might be it. Because they're not referencing here either.
Like I said, I remember telling, telling them that they had to have a certain number of garbage cans in the, in the unit.
But I don't think they're looking at fire and life safety issues like we do.
I don't know, I mean, that, yes, some of this stuff would just...
Garbage cans is what ends up out on the street.
It's like, take me in my wife's beauty shop. The garbage can for the bathroom has to be labeled garbage can for bathroom.
We won't ask you why.
Oh, you're gonna bring us a new one now?
Oh, we're not doing it, no, no, no.
Well, that was exciting.
That was, yeah, that was a good...
I, well, I...
Are we billing up to something, you know?
We'll, we'll come back to this one, because I'm not convinced we're off the hook.
Well, I imagine that if somebody's coming in a client for overnight rental too, I mean...
I certainly reserve the right to be wrong, as I always do.
Oh, tiny houses?
We'll do a more detailed read of the act, and see if, if, uh, I can achieve your comfort level. That fifty, fifty-three eighty-three, tiny houses. Now, we don't regulate tiny houses per se, it's a single-family residence or an equivalent residential unit, if it has a kitchen and a bathroom in it, whether it's four hundred square feet or forty thousand square feet.
Same, uh...
It's a house. However, there is some language in here that tends to preempt some of the local regulation in terms of putting tiny houses in areas that are permitted for manufactured housing. Now, where this may become interesting, or no, depending upon how it goes, you do have some plats out there, Oral Beach comes immediately to mind, uh, where they're restricted to trailer. Now, reading this, does that restriction still remain in place? Does it's a restriction on the face of the plat? How does this impact, uh, CCNRs, where they put those in place? That's part of the, the greater level of detail I wanna get into, in terms of not necessarily whether we need to adopt new regulation, but more how it might have impacted things that are already on the board.
I'd like to be very involved here, where it says, without regard to competitive bidding laws, uh, that you can, uh, organizations, county, county and government, something that can hire, um, people to build tiny houses as training programs.
The briefings we got, and I understand this was directed towards like schools, and things like that, where, without having to go through all this process, you could build these things for a recent...
Right.
So, anyway, uh...
So, it doesn't really, doesn't really affect...
I see this more as a, um, uh, local government zoning preempt. And, and in other words, the state's taking over your zoning code to some degree. And you'll find that there's a section in here that was adopted only a few years ago that didn't allow, it, it, cities or towns can't keep RVs from being used as a single-family residence in mobile home parts. That was a provision, that was a preemption of the local zoning code. This one has similar stuff, although it allows counties to use, uh, tiny homes as a single-family dwelling option. It also adds to those RVs, tiny homes to mobile home parts. I don't think that's a provision that applies to counties too.
Well, the one iteration I've read did. I, I haven't looked at this one absolutely closely either, I'm gonna bring it to the commissioner's attention too, so that when I wander in later, there's something that isn't described, so...
Where was the, did you have...
There was language about not, uh, reg- local regulations would keep them out, uh. Now, at one point, it was counties, every, everybody, at another point, it was only GMA counties and other areas, it was only urban growth areas, so...
Did you, well, did you notice the final part of that?
I...
We'll look at that one too.
Did, did they include a definition of the tiny home in here?
Not really.
You know, that, I had that question at, uh, the Wildland Fire Advisory Committee meeting, they're referring to some legislation that we were involved with, that the committee were referring to URG. So I said, okay, for a comprehensive plan counties, and the definition is, is city expansion areas, not urban growth areas, does that attempt us? They all, Rajk, and then, we have no idea.
Uh, but it says that the International Building Code has tiny homes in it?
No.
Says the legislature recognizes that the International Code Council, that's the...
Who does the international codes, right?
In eight, in twenty eighteen, it issued tiny house building code standards in appendix Q.
And the international... Says it have to be, the International Code Council has to have specifications drawn up by December thirty-first nineteen.
And that, that would have to be adopted by the state of Washington.
Right, building judge.
Or us, which has, to my knowledge.
They just follow suit, so...
Well, they have made some exceptions, haven't they, to the International Building Code? To the International Building Code, the state building.
Oh, yeah, there's tons of amendments.
This is a good definition. For purposes of the section. Tiny house and tiny house with wheels means a dwelling to be used as permanent housing with permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation built in accordance with the state building code. So, I guess what that means is if it's on wheels or if it's stationary, as long as it's got provisions with.
Right, I got a call from the guy from Labor and Industries that will be dealing with the ones on wheels. Supposedly, from his take on all of this, anything that's on wheels, LNI is gonna be doing the permitting and inspecting of how they're built. If they're not on wheels, they're built on site, that's all us.
Right.
But they're not gonna be built to HUD standards. LNI is gonna require them to be built to International Residential Code standards.
Right.
But they will be permitting and inspecting the actual.
So for that, is, are, are we, is that R thirty, I mean, R, R twenty-two in the walls, R thirty ceiling?
Yep, state building code.
The whole blazing.
Mm-hmm.
Stuff.
Weatherization tech stuff.
So, I think that's gonna, that's gonna hamper.
That's gonna hamper people around here.
Yeah.
Because I mean, that's not, you're, you're not able to build what two-by-threes on a trailer anymore.
The question I have is that, are to be favored or opposed to tiny homes?
Well, I don't know. It, it depends on if they're gonna, I mean, if you're gonna take an RV park that was zoned as an RV, let's, I mean, let's take that as a example.
Right.
An RV park, it was zoned as an RV park, which meant that in the initial SEPA review, it was looked at as temporary housing. Right, part-time, on and off. Didn't know, you didn't know what the average was gonna be, and it could be, it could be full, it could not be, or whatever. And then if you, if they, sorry, if you put tiny homes or whatever in there, then all of a sudden it becomes a subdivision.
So, but, now that's something that.
It's different.
Well, that's something that we, at the local zoning level, would be dealing as far as RV parks are concerned.
I mean, I don't.
If we have, if we have, if we have rules for RV parks, I mean, oftentimes, RV parks will say that they're not for sometimes you use them, types of, but aren't for over thirty days residential type uses. Now, around here, we don't have that kind of code because I see they're used for, they're almost mobile home parks.
I, I have no issue with people building tiny homes because, just like Perry said, whether it's eighty square feet, eight hundred, or you know, eight hundred dollars square feet, it's still a house.
Well, the fact is they're little houses.
Yeah, that's all it is.
I was in Portland here last week and, last week, they were building. A friend of mine that I was staying down there with is pretty bad about these tiny, tiny homes. And I was going, they're really putting them in this neighborhood, you know, because I know the neighborhood in it. And they really aren't putting tiny homes in it. What they're doing is they're taking, you know, some of the setback areas, even the corner setbacks where you have a twenty-five foot setback from the street, and they're actually building homes that are narrow, they look like little row houses. And they're building them in those spaces and they're doing infield development like that.
Well, that's different.
Yeah, it is different. And, and he was up in arms over tiny homes and he was going, it's ruining the neighborhood. And I'm going, no way to me.
Not the homes, it's the places, right?
Well, to my, from my perspective, it's only, there's people, there's a demand for them. People are buying them up right and left, right? They're having to build. Well, not necessarily. It's, they would be cheaper than a regular size. I wouldn't say so because they're brand-new homes on city lots and they're just skinnier. Let me put it that way. And they have garages underneath them and three stories. And they're skinny. So if you go look at, they look different, that's for sure. If you lived in the neighborhood forever and, and you saw these different kinds of architecture in your neighborhood, all of a sudden you see little these road houses popping up with setbacks that are like three foot, five foot setbacks. I don't know how they're dealing with the fire deal there, but, but that's one thing. And then, of course, tiny homes are, tiny homes these days, and they're talking a lot about them, a lot of them on wheels. So, really, code required, so they're using this term tiny home all over the place.
Yeah, exactly. It's a good definition.
Really, definition of the tiny home. To everybody, it's something different.
Isn't an RV that's on wheels?
It can be classified recreational vehicle through LNI if they meet those requirements.
What they're doing to break out the RV differences is though, an RV will have self-contained water and plumbing. Oh, oh, gotcha. Right, right.
And the other thing is, is that when you drag around a little house, I think you'd prefer to have a travel trailer because they're getting pretty heavy, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about, I mean, you, you, it's, it's the same wall thickness, the same insulation, the same truss, uh, snow rains.
So, but you.
Same windows, all that other stuff. It's just contained. It just makes its floor plan. It's a small.
Well, it's a house. It's like you don't have to hire the Uber to come and move your house.
Right.
And they don't, they really don't intend to move that often, but they are, they were designed by people and for people that, that, you know, didn't, didn't know if their future was gonna put them in a particular place for a long period of time. So, I think in lots of ways, we, some of the things that we might be most concerned about would be that you're increasing your density and your, your structures on a lot because it's easy to do, right? But when somebody permanently lives there, except for they have enough mobility that they can move because they're tired of living on their parents' lot. Conversation you had earlier. And so that's, I think, what was going on there. And then there's others that just only need a little bit of space. But the wheels, I mean, I could put something on skids and put the wheels under next week, you know, and really it's.
I, I think that one limiting factor we have is the fact that it gets down to, you know, eighteen below zero. I mean, there are not a lot of travel trailers and, and stuff up off of the ground that really can survive that for too terribly long.
So, you may have seen sometime, went through many, many years ago, but there was a gentleman there that, you know, there was a lot of him around. He built a house on his truck, right? And he's seven feet tall, six eleven or something. And so it's a real tall house. That house is sitting up there in, up there by Doave, on top of a mountain. And it had, he had it insulated and the whole thing, but he sure as heck didn't wanna call it around. But it's still sitting there. But he's passed away, so it's, but it's still sitting there. And that was probably one of the first tiny homes I ever saw. We didn't call it tiny homes. It's like, Woody has a house on his truck.
It was the camper that he took off of the truck.
But it, but it met code. I mean, I mean, it's had fully insulated and everything like that.
What's a third bill, Mr.?
Let's see, this is another bill. I'll, I'll decide later how excited.
Is he doing this for?
I wanted, I wanted you to know that we are reviewing it. We'll work with Dan on this one just to see what ripple effect it might have for local. But last but not least is a requirement that actually has mostly to do with requirements of time of transfer title of residential real estate, but it has one passage in it or assigned responsibilities to the county fire marshal or other official as designated by the county legislative authority.
Oh.
We have no county fire marshal. At some point, the county legislative authority will designate an official to carry out the requirements of this bill relevant to that position.
That can't just get kicked down the roof without a year.
Well, it says the county fire official or other fire official, so designated by the county.
Now, there's specific discussion about the county legislative authority.
No, that's what I said. Subsection, that's five I I. Chief of Fire Department?
Chief of Fire Department in cities or the county fire marshal or other.
Fire official. So we don't have to have a fire marshal.
No, 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 maybe designate someone else.
But.
I think the designated, I think the designated building official would be just a perfect.
No, no, it says or other fire here that's just coming.
You don't have, you don't have a fire official. That works.
Can you not designate the, a rural, couldn't you designate a rural chief?
I suppose. But they only have, we, we have to figure out how to do that. Because there are specific state school authorities within their district.
Yeah, right.
Well, you could go to the Fire Chiefs Association and say, whoever's that.
But the Fire Chiefs Association recommends pretty much annually that the county create a fire marshal's office.
Oh, I know. And my answer to that is, not no, but hell no. When the last state fire marshal conversation I had with him, he said, you not wanna go there. Because you've got too many old buildings in your county.
So, anyway, bring it to the commissioners and we'll do a more detailed read on this one.
Yeah.
And see exactly what our obligations are.
What really gets your attention when you see is provided by the Administrative Procedure Act, Chapter thirty-four oh five, rules and regulations promulgated by the chief of the Washington State Patrol. Through the director.
That's what the fire marshal is?
Yes.
It's administered by the state.
Commissioners, under the banner of your comprehensive plan update, I just want to let you know that the planning commission did begin their review at their last meeting. I have not issued the draft environmental impact statement yet. They have actually asked for some additional analysis under the banner of economic impact. So we're trying to craft what that might look like with members of the planning commission. So it will probably include some additional analysis in the environmental impact statement regarding the, in, in very broad strokes, what they're looking at is the impact of the development or more the location of development or the type of development and the impacts it has or not on services. Obviously, an, an obvious example, that would be our primitive roads. If you put too much density at the end of a primitive road, it triggers that hundred ADT. What is the cost per mile or whatever? Uh, we're trying to say, we're trying to come up with, with kind of a, a very primitive, albeit with some kind of model to try to do some comparisons. And then the devil there is obviously in the detail. Sheriff's office as an example. If you had no growth in the county, would the sheriff's office budget be stagnant? Absolutely not. It will, it will still increase for a variety of reasons. If you have more development, will it increase at a higher rate? Perhaps. The, the missing piece in a discussion like that is level of service. I mean, if you had statute that says for every however many people, you've gotta have a deputy, then obviously you have a direct correlation. More people, more deputies, more expense. Uh, you just don't have that to lay as a foundation, so it's gonna be more of a comparison.
Sure. Has there been discussion in the past at all about levels of service standards?
I'm sorry?
Discussions in the past about, or has there been about level of service standards?
You know, one of the things, and then in my mind, one thing we can do is, if nothing else, is compare personnel. How many deputies did we have when we had this many people? And how many deputies do we have with this many people? Is that more, is it less? You know, and leave the conclusions, if you will, to the bodies making the decision. So.
Well, I mean, you have a lot of other factors though with that one.
Lot of other factors with that one. So some is gonna be simpler than others.
Yeah, I mean, fire would, fire departments probably would be a lot easier to figure out because, well, I mean, you got valuation versus number of, you know, true versus number of guys.
True. So, so we'll do some comparison. It, it'll slow us down a little bit, but not markedly so. And we'll try to give some, some kind of information to them so they can handle that.
His department of health puts one on EMS, right? Which is a bunch of them. And, and like for police, you know, sometimes there's a lot of people that can be stagnant before you end up triggering another patrol guard.
Yeah, it is.
So, anyway, the.
When you think, when you think about it, let me just go through that real quick. Right now, if you were to pinpoint the, the outside edge of your response area, right, they can still have to, they still have to respond to any calls made within those, in their response, in the response area.
They do.
So, then you would have to go through demographics to find out, okay, if it's, if it's, you know, uh, if you're selling a whole bunch of high-end homes, is that, how much more police presence can you need versus low income houses versus whatever? I mean, there's a lot of different things in there that.
That it depend on the level of service model would be a daunting challenge. So I would say the best is gonna be some, some comparison. And there's gonna be some, some modeling sorts of assumptions. The ambulance, for instance, we had that work up done by Mr. Walker in terms of response times and how far out. You could use that to extrapolate. I mean, if you put more density farther out, the odds are you'll have more calls for service. That'll require an elongated response time. Now, is that necessarily true? No, but, but it's essentially a, a speculative analysis. If you don't have anybody out there, then there's no one to go to. Does that mean you wanna have any response? Not if you're tied back to, you're often make point in which a compliment say, if you promote recreational activities, winter sports, all that sort of thing, well, okay, you may not have any houses out there to go to. You know, but how many snowmobilers are you gonna have to airlift? It's a hard review as a result of those sorts of promotional activities.
It didn't actually pay into the districts that they're recreating.
You know, and then, and there again, part of your economic analysis, if you're promoting those sorts of activities, what's the revenue stream generated to offset? That as additional calls for service. I mean, people make a living out of doing things like this, so it's not.
Yeah, there's the people that are, uh, doing their risk pool work, actually. They make a living doing that. Pretty good one too. And also the trends, I mean, the trends in terms of who's moving, who's moving out into the interlands. You know, if you have lots of retired people, you know, there's, you might have a trend that says there's more ambulance calls because as we get older and tend to, in the end.
And we can use some real time, you know, we can use some real time data in terms of law enforcement and emergency medical response. I mean, even fire response to the point of where are they going? How many times do they go way out? How many times do they go real close? You know, what's the breakdown? So we, we put some things together for them. It's just, it's gonna take a little extra time. And I want the commissioners to know they've asked for that, so. Uh, M ten ceiling project, we have at least one submittal in response to our RFQ. I believe more may, as we did set aside, for the end of those submittals, we'll probably put it on your study session agenda for the following Monday to actually open those and review them. Then the Tanaskid EMS, the state auditors have told me they're going to conduct another audit of Tanaskid EMS. So I have my crew gathering up that information. Twenty eighteen would be relatively simple with a monthly payment. What I wanna make sure we focus on is where the transition took place. Because we did some inventory and transferred some assets and those sorts of things. We'll double check that, make sure that paperwork is in order so they can conduct that audit. That'll probably be June or July, so we have some time. Commissioners, that's your agenda. Anything for me?
Well, it was a pretty big, irritating agenda.
I wanted to talk throughout it.
I wanna keep you busy. Idle hands.
Yes.
That's right. Ben, anything you have on, bro?
No, no, sir. I, I did know that some of those were coming through. I just didn't know what they were gonna really look like in the end and how they'd affect us.
We'll come back with a more detailed report in terms of what, if anything, we think we need to do.
Yes, it'll probably be next year by the time the, and the planning association of Washington do their lead review on the new bills in the last, right?
Could be, could be. I'm still trying to find out where to send the money we've collected from Welcom in, in forty-nine.
That we've been collecting for a year, anyway?
Yeah.
Hey, are we allowed to invest?
I'll send another, I'll send some more emails around and ask DOE. We're supposed to, supposed to send it to the, wait, is DOE? But so far, anybody that wants it.
Spread it out to the regional director, say, there you go.
Well, I, I actually sent her an email to say, so we'll see.
We just tell her that. We'll send her the money after the CDs expire. Every month, every, every.